I'd like to call this meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Could we have a roll call, please, Des?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Potem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacamo.
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Do you all please join me in the pleasure of the meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I've got a nasty cough while I'm wearing a mask, so if you can't hear me, I'm quality guy, but I'll try to do the best I can, guys. All right? Announcements, we've got our next regular commission meeting Tuesday, March 14th, 6:00 PM here in the chambers. I want to welcome everybody here tonight. Good crowd, like to see the involvement, and we look forward to hearing from you. So, thank you for coming out tonight. This time, we're going to take committee reports from Commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley?
Okay, so I attended the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District's annual meeting, January 26th through 27th in Santa Fe. On Thursday, we had the legislative priority report from the Municipal League and from the New Mexico Counties Association. We've already heard a lot about that, so I won't go into all those details. But they are working very well, the league is working very well with the Association of Counties on similar efforts. North Central and the non-metro AAA also gave an update. North Central itself has prioritized funding to continue the grant writing and technical assistance program and funding to purchase their own premises closer to the Capitol. The non-metro AAA reported that by 2030, one-fifth of New Mexico's population will be aged, and we will be the fourth-largest senior population in the nation. So they're asking for an increase in funding, not nearly enough, but an increase in funding for wages, inflation, and to serve the growing population of seniors. They also presented the audit report. The North Central staff worked really hard to have a clean audit, but there was one finding that was the auditor's fault due to a compliance issue with a form from 2021. So that finding will still go to North Central's audit, even though they weren't at fault. And they were a little frustrated, rightfully so, with that process. Lots of action items, just typical stuff, Open Meetings Act, calendars, oops. Officers and board appointments amended, they amended the JPA, most particularly regarding property ownership, so that they can actually own premises. They did some budget adjustments and organizational charts, and they were all approved. Of note, during the other reports, North Central helped with, at that point, 39 grant applications for order over $47 million, with 20 actual awards and around $8.6 million at that time. And it seemed to be going up all the time as they get grant money in. Thursday ended with a discussion on strategic planning. They have several core programs that are very important, and then they have slowly expanded into service, and then they have many emerging programs. And with so many different hats to wear, they wanted some input on where to go in the future. But some of the best programs, I think, are some of the emerging ones we don't want to get rid of, like that technical assistance with the grant writing, that was really important program. Friday's meeting was a lot of different presentations. We had a presentation on the broadband highway in the state and completing that. They're trying to get the state connected in broadband pathways, kind of like railway connections. So they did explain that Starlink, because that was the question, is Starlink part of the broadband connection? And they said, not as far as the state's looking because of its prohibitive pricing. But they encouraged everyone to report the broadband situation in our own homes by going to broadbandmap.fcc.gov. And you can put in whether you have broadband, if their map is accurate, whether there's actually broadband at your house, what the speeds are, and you can kind of tell them the situation, and then they review that in a revolving manner. Even though there might say a deadline on there, they're constantly reviewing that to update their map, trying to get that throughout the state. They had a presentation on the Older Americans Act and the role of the AAA and some different kind of cool innovations that are going on with senior centers. And then they had state and federal staff from FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management that talked about the post-fire recovery, particularly with Hermits Peak and Cat Canyon Fire. They actually have a huge toolkit of resources, so many things out there. And the main goal is that they have all these different industry or agencies coming in, and so it's really confusing for people and for the agencies, because one agency says this, another says that, so they're trying to unite all of that effort. And so they're going to have community meetings and trainings to make that easier. They have a lot of different lines of effort in the recovery right now, including timbershed, yeah, timber shed and watershed and drinking water supply. They encouraged us to, the city, to always have our hazard mitigation plan updated every five years, because that was what kind of slowed down the funding. Tricia Corbus was there from the EDA and did kind of a five-year review for that program. North Central was actually the number-one funded cog in New Mexico, most of that due to the Great Jobs Challenge money. And she is also involved in the economic recovery line of effort for the fire recovery with the state. Our next meeting will be April 27th in Santa Fe. The Colfax County Senior Citizens met on February 7th in Raton. We discussed the Simron Center renovation and the need to expend funds as soon as possible, because there was some talk of reverting the funds. And they also had a small policy revision regarding the Nutritional Code of Conduct. The next meeting will be March 14th at 10:00 AM in Raton. Then, along with several others, with the mayor, Mayor Potem, Mr. Berry, and Desiree as well, we attended the municipal day in Santa Fe, and I also attended the Board of Directors meeting for the Municipal League, February 16th and 17th in Santa Fe. We had some remarks from Lieutenant Governor Harry Morales and a presentation by the state auditor. The actual legislative briefing was shorter than usual because of the hearing on the tax permitting. During the Board of Directors meeting after that, we received a little bit more information. One thing we discussed was the goal to reduce the state's share of the GRT admin fee, since they're getting 3%, which is about $51 million just to give us our GRT. So they talked a little bit about that, because that's not really a reasonable cost. They also spent some time showing us the ICASA Tax Analysis Tool Software that New Mexico Tech has come up with, and it's really cool, because they can come up with these data sets of different tax strategies and industry-level information that can help cities, like they can do stuff super quick, whereas usually they would have to gather the data, make a report, so they can run anything that we might need as a city, as far as that goes. They're using it to discuss proposed bills with legislatures, and there are a lot of needs, I think, that we'll see that that will meet coming in the future. They're working on the audit. We probably all got the survey for the five-year plan that they're working on. And the New Mexico Self Insurers Fund, it seems like things were going really well there, it's very, has strong reserves. They did the boots-on-the-ground property assessment, so those rates are going to be going up about 25%. But workers' comp is going to be coming down around 75, and I think that's what it had, and then liability around 50%, so there'll be some savings as well. And that board will meet again in June. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacamo.
The Raton Public Service Company Board of Directors met, meeting that was held yesterday at February 27th, 2005, 30:00 PM. Robin Osborne, Raton Public Service Office Manager/Bookkeeper, presented to and approved by the Board of Financial and Statistical Information. General Manager Dave Fonsino gave his report on the call-up to run Unit 4 from Guzman Industries. The unit has been running in the evenings from 48, and has scheduled to run up until March. Dave also reported that there's 35 new residents and three commercial meters changed out. Dave also did monitoring the gas usage and power usage during the running of Unit 4, and also the line crews have been trimming trees and around the power lines, and this is an ongoing job. There was no library board meeting this month, scheduled to be this month. That's all that I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Chavez?
Yes, on Tuesday, February 21st, myself and Mayor Potem Schuster attended the Water Board meeting. Lake Malloy is currently two feet, three inches down from spilling, and it's gradually, slowly getting good runoff, so the lake is coming up. Crews repaired two 18-inch, very expensive valves at the sewer plant. And residential, they're doing the seasonal leaks and frozen meters. And all interested employees have now got their CADL license for training. Do you have anything you want to add on that thing?
No, sounds good, thank you.
I also attended the Financial Advisory Committee meeting on February 23rd, and approved the financials to be presented to the City Commission tonight. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Potem?
So the only thing new I have to add, either Commissioner Chatterley or... Don't you hate that?
Yeah, that's...
I don't want to say a word.
Never happens to you. Anyway, so on the 16th, we went down to the Legislative Council with Municipal League, and then on the 17th, Mr. Berry and I and Desiree were able to sneak over to the Capitol Building and listen to the hearing on House Bill 367, which is in regards to, they were changing the tax structure, or attempting to, regarding services, taking away GRT from services. Not all services, I think they were just talking about services between corporations. So in the end, the bill got, there was a lot of comment, and Mr. Berry put some words in, and in the end, the bill got tabled, which it's not a bad bill, but they didn't have the whole thing thought out, so we thought it was a good thing that it was tabled. Then we were able to have a short chat with Senator Pete Campos's assistant, he wasn't in the office while we were there, but we had a good chat with him and, you know, discussed our goals and for the city, and so I think it was a productive meeting. Aside from that, I can report I had a really nice vacation earlier in the month.
All righty. Okay, thank you. For myself, I attended the North Central Board meeting as well. Just kind of would like to highlight something that the non-metropolitan Agency on Aging is asking, well, the Aging Department from today is asking for a $7.5 million increase for funding of senior centers throughout the state. Doesn't really sound out like a lot, and when you break it down further, non-metro would get 60% of that, which is about $3.3 million. Within non-metro, there are 56 providers and 131 senior centers. As an example, Raton here, if we only got the 4.5, we'd get a little over $11,000. That doesn't even buy, buys groceries for about a month and two. We've gotten, like Commissioner Chatterley said, by 2030, per capita, New Mexico is going to be the fourth-largest state 60-plus. I urge all of you to call your legislators, tell them we need more money. Better than that, go call the federal legislators, because they only provide about 17% of our budget, and it's been that way. I've been in the business now for 11 years, and it's been that same percentage every year. So I just would like to urge all of you to please support your senior centers, first and foremost, but call your legislators and tell them, we need funding desperately. All righty. Thank you. New Mexico Municipal League, Uni Day was there, on the New Mexico Self Insurers Fund Board, and Lori hit the highlights, there's going to be a couple of decreases and an increase in building property. And I have sat in in several budget hearings with the Legislative Finance Committee, Senate Finance Committee, whatever committees down there that are dealing with money. I've been in those meetings, and it's been interesting, but you hear some pretty interesting requests as well, so it's been pretty busy. Bill 367, Mr. Berry, I understand it's kind of alive again.
It's alive again, yes.
We'll need to hit the lines on that one again.
In case you're wondering, what's the downside? It significantly decreases funding that comes back to the city, to the municipalities, so it would affect our, the city income.
It's about a loss of $71 million statewide to municipalities. All righty. That's all I have, so let's move on to the action items. Deliverate an act on approval of February 14th, 2022, regular meeting minutes. You should all have those in your packet. That's the reveal.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know. I apologize, if we, items from citizens present, just skipped, I know most people are here for an item, but, just in case.
That wasn't on purpose. Items from citizens present, we'll go back to that. If you're here to speak about something that is on the agenda, please wait till that comes up. Otherwise, we will entertain anybody right now that wishes to address the commission. Guess you're all here for an item, I can't imagine which one. Okay, Item B. Thank you, Commissioner. Deliverate an act on preliminary replat of the Daniels subdivision in the city of Raton, Lot 17, 18, 19, 20, of the Mountain View Sub and North 7 Feet Block 16, of the Fairview subdivision currently zoned R5 Residential District. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, this is a replat of an area currently in the Fairview subdivision. You do have in your packet a small version of the proposed plat, this is a preliminary plat of Daniel's subdivision. The developer, Mr. Molitor, is present with us tonight, and he can answer questions if you have questions for him. We also have our staff from the zoning office present as well. You do have in your packet a report from Kevin Nolan, he is the zoning officer, reporting on a meeting that was held on February 23rd of the City Planning and Zoning Commission. The plat was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning, and they voted on a recommendation to approve that and bring it to you. And so, let's talk about the ordinance requirements on a subdivision plat. It does prescribe for a submittal of a preliminary plat that will go to Planning and Zoning initially for their recommendation to the commission, and then the preliminary plat will be brought to the City Commission. That's what's going on tonight with an affirmative recommendation from P&amp;Z. Assuming that some issues will be identified in that process, if you choose to approve the preliminary plat, then it will go back for submittal of a final plat. The final plat then will go back to Planning and Zoning Commission, and if approved there or receives their affirmative recommendation, it will come back to the City Commission for your consideration of a final plat. And I would estimate that that could come back to the City Commission on March 28th. Now, just to kind of summarize the discussion at Planning and Zoning, really boils down to three issues. One is transportation, and you do have three existing city streets generally bounding the, as you see on your drawing, the east, the south, and the west boundaries of the proposed subdivision. Arnold Street to the east, Market to the west, and Woodrow would bound that to the south, and then there would be an undeveloped area that it would border to the north. So transportation is provided, there is not an alley platted with this. Utilities would be generally run across the lot through a utility easement. So there will be a utility easement down the center of the plat, north to south, and that generally will be for overhead power. The utilities have all participated in the planning of this over numerous meetings over a couple of months, and so you do have the recommendation for approval from Water and Wastewater, Raton Natural Gas, and Raton Public Service Company. And then the third thing would be drainage. The developer has prepared a drainage report, which you have in your packet, it's fairly straightforward. Generally, the lot slopes, pretty good slope from the west side to the east side, generally from southwest to northeast, that puts the drainage on Arnold Street. When you get to the intersection of Arnold and Kearney, there is an existing drainage facility that would continue conveying that drainage to the north and ultimately to natural drainage. So that's, what the drainage report compares the developed condition to is the condition that we saw there a number of years ago, when that was a mobile home park, and there was a lot of impervious surfaces with, I think, up to 28 mobile homes on this site. So we have had a long-term condition where the site had been developed, we had those impervious surfaces, we channeled that runoff. That mobile park was cleaned up some, a few years ago, and it's basically in a vacant condition in that time, but the report does say that you'll actually have a lower peak runoff from the design storms that are evaluated in there compared to the previous developed condition. So that's all pretty straightforward. I'll hold up there and answer any questions. Mr. Molitor is available to answer your questions, and the Planning and Zoning staff is also available. I would state that this is 10 lots that, for an R5 district, are large. It's a large area for, much larger than the R5 zoning calls for. So I'll hold up there and answer any questions you might have.
Right, and answer, Mr. Berry. Any questions for Mr. Berry? Paul, Mr. Molitor, would you like to address the commission this time?
If you'd like, sure. Thank you.
Sure.
So, as you all know, a brief history of that property, it was owned by an older couple, they owned other properties here in town. They were absentee owners, they lost control of it, they were poor managers, and it really went downhill, so the city stepped in and retracted that approval for a mobile home park. The property was then given to another gentleman, he tried to come back in with a better, newer mobile home park, and that was denied. So he didn't want to do with the property. So we stepped in, and we'd like to present our 10 homes, similar, they're made in Albuquerque, New Mexico. They're all, minimum is 1,200 square feet, and we're thinking of putting those on our lots, they're anywhere from 40% of an acre, 16,000 feet, up to a half-acre lots. So they're all big lots, the driveways are already in place, the utilities are already circling the property. We do have to do a little repair on the sewer line, but the water and the electric and the gas are all right there. And all that would be on cross utility easement agreements, which mock or mimic the utility, the setbacks. So we have no utility agreement that could be possibly built on in the future, because they're all conforming to the setbacks that the city requires for those lots. So. Any other questions?
How much questions for Mr. Molitor?
I had the one complaint that I've heard was about the drainage, but once we got the plat and everything, it addresses it, and I think it's very satisfactory now.
Yeah, and there's some, the city work that will be done, I mean, the city's behind on some of their work, and they need more money, so you need more housing, you got to have more taxes to get everything cleaned up. And we've had positive response, we have almost six potential buyers in that subdivision. I have two houses coming up in March and April for my first subdivision on the east side of town, and so the progression is moving very smoothly, so.
Yeah, I've read the report, the runoff is very similar to what was before.
Yeah, it's actually a 16% deduction in it, so it'll be less, so, okay?
I very much appreciate all the effort that went into the planning behind that.
Well, we tried to do it right, so that's what we're trying to do for Raton, so.
Appreciate it.
It's definitely the type of housing we need, mid-level, affordable housing.
Yeah, our guidelines are still the same, we start at 200, and we probably won't go over 350 unless somebody really wants the bigger house. But those lots are big enough, so even at 30%, you know, that's a 5,000-square-foot house, which I don't think is going to happen in Raton, but up to 2,500 could be a possibility, and we're covered, so, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And wish to the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary replat of the Daniels subdivision in the city of Raton, Lot 17, 18, 19, 20, of the Mountain View Sub and North 7 Feet Block 16, of the Fairview subdivision currently zoned R5 Residential District.
One second. We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary replat of the Daniels subdivision. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, Presentation for Proposed Development of El Portel Site. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, we do have some folks present today to talk to you about a proposal for development of the site. The El Portel site, of course, was the location of a historic hotel, and then we had a fire that really destroyed the building, and the debris was removed. And in the process of settling up on costs that came with cleaning up the lot, the city became the owner of that property and has been the owner of that property for some years, about 10 years. I think the city had looked at that property as an effort for planning that we've been going into, and it would follow really our development of the historic First Street area. So you remember, we had the multimodal development, great blocks, a couple of phases of that, a number of other projects in the downtown area. And now, I think, when we look at downtown revitalization, we're looking at the El Portel site, we've asked the public, you know, what would be the various ideas on developing that? The city has submitted. Now, this year would be the second request for funding from the New Mexico Legislature for development of a project that we called the Community Civic Plaza. And we did receive $25,000 of capital outlay in the 2022 legislature. We have not heard a request from the 2023 legislature at this point. We nominally would have used, looked at the funding for a professional planning effort, similar to what we did on First Street, and that's, we're at the very beginning of that planning effort, I would say right now. The property is a half a block, it's a pretty large property, approximately 300 feet by 140 feet, and it's kind of a blank slate. So when we did hold some public hearings on how to develop the property, we did get a variety of ideas, we had good participation in that, and now we look at going into the planning effort. I have talked to a group that is present here tonight, and they have proposed development of pickleball facility on the site. You all have met with the group previously, and we've talked about development of pickleball. So I've had several meetings with the group. They would like to step forward, address the commission as far as the plan, they've gone through some effort as far as trying to share a vision with you and with the community about what the, how the lot might develop and how it might look. And I'll hold up there, Mayor, and I think there are some people that would like to address the commission in regard to this proposal.
All righty. We have a spokesman, spokeswoman, anyone?
Several.
Several. Okay, if you could just kind of be succinct and agree, we'll try to take as many as we can.
Okay, my name is Barbara Von Humen, and I was selected as the elder of the group to introduce this project to you. And we're here to present our vision of the El Portel property, not only for dedicated pickleball courts, but as a civic plaza, which will include dedicated pickleball courts. And the development of... And the development of this property will give quality of life to this community and renew pride that we once had. Now, in July of 2021, six of us met on the high school tennis courts to see what this game was all about. Well, the game started back in the mid-'60s as a recreational activity for families to play in their backyards, and it's a combination of tennis, ping pong, and badminton. Pickleball was named after the inventor's dog, Pickle. Since that first day of our play in July of 2021, none of us had looked back. As an avid tennis player, this activity has given me reason to get out, to exercise, to have fun, and to socialize for two hours and more every day. Players from Trinidad join us most every week. Not only do they come to play, but they patronize our restaurants and our businesses as well. And we have had players from Canada, Australia, California, Arizona, Ohio, and other states. With dedicated courts, we will attract snowbirds who are traveling from their winter homes back to their summer homes and vice versa. Now, enhancing economic development, by all means, a beautiful civic plaza with dedicated pickleball courts will attract many snowbirds and other travelers. Nationally, the average age of pickleball players is 55. Locally, the age range is from seven to 87. Now, I'm not 87, but I'm the elder. I'm getting there. Our court usage has increased since 2021, the lowest being 181 players in a month, in the month of December 2021, to the highest being 349 in August of 2022. Now, these numbers are people that have made use of the courts every month. Daily, we have 15 to 20 that play regularly. According to a 2022 report from the Sports and Fitness Industry Association, pickleball grew more than 40% between 2019 and 2021, making it America's fastest-growing sport. There are over 4.8 million pickleball players today in America. So with that, I will pass it on to Brian.
If Barb is the elder, I think I'm the, the child, I suppose, if I can still be called that.
Could you state your name for us?
Yes, my name's Brian Naziri. I'm a local dentist here in Raton. I want to talk a little bit about myself, what brought me to Raton. I moved to Raton a little over 13 years ago, and one of the big questions I used to get, and I still get, is what brought me to Raton? What is there to do in Raton? Why am I in Raton? And my answer is usually the outdoor recreation. It's the biking, the hiking, the fishing, the hunting, the disc golf, all the other outdoor things that really draws me into this area. I've met so many people that have come to Raton to vacation, that have discovered Raton based on one chance stop. They're driving through, and one thing caused them to stop here and explore Raton. When they explored Raton, they found out how beautiful this town really is, and that one thing keeps bringing them back, year after year. I, myself, have been fortunate enough to do some traveling, and what I've discovered while traveling is each location usually has an identity, or something that kind of stands out in my mind or brings me back. And I want to share a little short story about a vacation I took several years ago. For those of you that know me, I'm an avid fisherman. I love fishing. So when I'm trying to plan a vacation, I'm always looking for something with a location that allows me to do as such. And so I've been kind of exploring the saltwater fishing thing, and with that, I started exploring the Baja, Mexico. So I went down to the Cabo San Lucas. A lot of people know that area as Cabo. For me, the Cabo area, kind of a little city, little busy, little hectic, a little too much party for what I'm looking for. Great fishing, though. So I decided to start venturing away from the city, into the smaller seaside towns, the smaller villages along that area. Along that kind of adventure of finding these towns, I came across the city of Los Briles. While visiting this town of Los Briles, I made several friends. One of those friends, one day, was sitting with me, described a sport called pickleball. Never heard of it, they knew I was kind of athletic, that kind of thing, they said, "Well, hey, you should come out and play." I said, "Sure, I'll give it a try." So, went out, tried the pickleball thing, okay? Well, I won't get into the details of how I got beat pretty bad by some 50-year-old women, I will say the one, one day is all it took, and I was kind of hooked, okay? When I returned back to Raton, I was kind of really excited to find out that there's a huge group of people that play pickleball. They play consistently, so I became another dedicated player, as much as my schedule could afford. And since that time, I've been fortunate enough to play in multiple different cities, different states, and of course, I made my way back down to Mexico to even the score a little bit, you know? So why is this story important? Why am I up here telling you this? The main reason is those courts in Los Briles have left a mark on me. It left a mark as a choice of my destination. I choose to go back to Los Briles, not because the fishing is better than any of those other seaside villages or those seaside towns, not because the hotels are cheaper, the food's better, it's because of the pickleball courts. It's the one thing that draws me back specifically to that place. Of course, I'm also doing the fishing thing, but that's the one thing that stands out, and that's the pickleball. Since then, I've taken friends, family members down to Los Briles, I've talked about Los Briles, mentioned the pickleball courts, of course. But the one big thing is, it had one thing extra to add that draws me back aside from everywhere else. I feel like the construction of a new park with pickleball courts is another answer to get to, get people to stop in our town, to fall in love with Raton, to come back to Raton. It'll help make Raton a regular destination. People choose to come here to Raton. These kinds of regular stops will also help improve the community economically. As stated earlier, people stay in the hotels, they'll eat in our restaurants, they'll get fuel here, they'll shop locally. When they get out and about, they'll explore our town, they'll find just how beautiful Raton really is, they'll fall in love with Raton, just like I did all those years ago. I'd like to see this park be another place where families can go, get out of the sun, have a picnic, play some pickleball, and explore Raton, to kind of grow Raton in both those economical and recreational endeavors, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Valerie Sikora. I guess I'm the 55-year-old, because that's how, you know, I'm, I'm the mean age of people that play pickleball. I am a retired nurse from the state of New Mexico, spent most of my adult life working, a lot of hours, retired about four years ago. First year, I pretty much rested. After that, I needed something to do. I stay busy, do a lot of things, but Coach Bonahum said, "Come try pickleball, you'll really like it. You've always played sports." Same as Brian. One day, next day, I was ordering a new paddle online. I love it. I've met an incredible group of people, which really fulfilled that socialization I was missing from work, because I, I enjoy people, all different ages, people that have moved here to Raton, people I would have never met. I met them playing pickleball, and they're great people. My balance is better, my hand-eye coordination is better, we have fun, everybody has fun that plays, and I love that about pickleball. The people that play have fun, and the people that watch have fun. It's a great socialization tool for older people. We have all ages, and everybody has fun. Everybody plays well. You don't have to be a super athlete to play this game, any body type, any ability type, any age, you don't have to run, you don't have to stretch, everybody can play, and it's great. And every, the more you play, the better you get, and I mean, there's all different levels, and we encourage beginners. We're gonna start having some classes for beginners to get people out there to play. I think a park, a civic plaza with pickleball courts would be a wonderful thing for downtown, and I really think it would breathe some really positive new life into Raton downtown. Different ages, I can see people from the post office walking across the street in the morning, maybe sit down, watch us for an hour, just to get out of the house and talk and chat. I think it would be a great thing for our community, and I think it would be something we could really be proud of, like Dr. Naziri was talking about. It's, it's just a great opportunity, and this is a really perfect time to take advantage of, of this. This would be a really beautiful feather in our cap. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to JP Duran and let him talk to you. Thank you very much, we appreciate his time.
Thank you.
I talked with you guys once before about numbers and what it would actually cost. At that time, we only had numbers for the surfacing of courts. Since then, we've gotten three legitimate bids from one company out of Kansas that's doing the $12 million project in Santa Fe. They're the ones that are hired to do all the courts. Their numbers are a little higher than anybody else, but, you know, maybe they're good, maybe they're not. $12 million project, until you see what's been done, you don't know. The other one we got is a company called Renner, and they're out of the Denver area. We have actually played on their courts in Pueblo. Wonderful courts. The last one that I got is another company out of the Denver area, and they did the indoor courts in Colorado Springs. They came in with the lowest proposal, and it's $363,000. That's eight courts, that's the surfacing, the lines, three colors on the courts, six-foot fence, totally around, all eight courts, and it's either green vinyl or black vinyl, that would be our choice as far as the chain link. It's not a galvanized fence, it's a vinyl fence. In between the courts are four-foot divider fences, so every court would have a four-foot fence in between, which are the green lines. The yellow line is a six-foot fence, totally around with one six-foot gate on the west side. The east side would not have anything because it's backing up to the alley. Every court has a four-foot gate to enter. The drawing's a little wrong because the gates would be offset, no gates would be straight across from each other. And the reason being for that is if one left open, ball goes out. The Pueblo courts, they are straight across from each other, the gate, and they're constantly going out of one court, going into the other court. Anyway, that's the reason for offsetting them. The area in the center is a 30-foot common area that would have benches, covering, places for people to sit, watch the games, get ready for games. That's what that area is designed for on that. Anyway, on two of these, we have actually played on their courts. The one in Springs, we've played on, and the one in Pueblo, we've played on, and they've done a fantastic job on those courts. Those are contractors that we would want to build our courts, just from being on them. I'm gonna get away from numbers a little bit and go out on a limb and say, this sport will become a high school sport. I was involved in professional fishing years ago, and they did not have high school sport in fishing. They didn't have college fishing, but when we fished in our tournaments, no matter where it was, I fished the FLW circuit, and our tournament was Thursday, Friday, Saturday. On Sunday was designated, those of us who chose to stay an extra day at the site, took college kids out. The college kids were not allowed to run a boat, so we took them out on our boats. We had two kids from every college, and they had a tournament of their own, sponsored by FLW. Now, college fishing is a big thing. High school fishing is a big thing. Pickleball is headed in that direction. We need to get on board with that. There's no reason why we cannot field a big-ball team in the future and be ready for it when, when it does turn into a high school sport. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm Leslie Fernandez, and my able assistant is handing out some additional information that you may not have gotten in your emails. Hopefully, you got some emails from our supporters, and if not, there are some things in there that I'll kind of go through and show. Well, let me do that first. If you open that, this, this drawing was done by someone who had no idea what I was talking about. It shows a 300, 300 feet frontage on Third Street, 160 feet on Park and on Park. It's a little, it's, it's making the pickleball courts a little bigger than, than it, than we think they really will be, but this document, which was provided by the city, shows the lot in 25-foot increments. So you'll see that the pickleball courts are 140 feet wide, and then they take up the entire 160 feet from alley to Third Street. So that leaves 100 feet to the south and about 40 feet or 50 feet on the north side of the courts for what we envision as the civic plaza, park area, that will bring people to, to this park. And that's what we see it as. We see it as a park with pickleball courts. The park will include covered benches, covered tables, gathering area, and landscaping that we believe will be attractive, and we hope may tie into the multimodal setting on First Street, to kind of make this the, the Santa Fe Railroad Station and Third Street now an identity for Raton. So that's what we, we picture. It's, it's not just pickleball courts. It's lush, hopefully lush vegetation, and lots of covered tables, pickle, benches, both here to watch the pickleball courts inside, and then all these orange blocks, for instance, are covered tables, restroom, that sort of thing. We got here because in December, we received information from a donor, a private donor, with an incredibly generous offer, and that was to make dedicated pickleball courts. He's, the, the donor is from here, no longer lives here, but he loves Raton, and specifically and only, he wants this lot fixed after the 10 years of dirt. And so, we even said, "How about the aquatic center?" Nope. Nope, nope. We need to fix the El Portel building, or the old, the lot. The donor has offered us $100,000. And if we can match that $100,000, they would add another $100,000 to the till. That doesn't get us all the way. We know that we still need more money. Because if we're gonna put up the type of things that are down on First Street for the multimodal place, Mr. Berry has told me that was an expensive proposition. But we envision the same kind of, you know, semicircular seating areas, those lovely overhangs where everybody hangs out before they're on the bus or the train, maybe a smaller version of that, but that same kind of thing. It's gonna cost a lot of money. But we have a private donor that I don't think the city can look a gift horse in the mouth to fix this lot. We have contacted the state engineer and New Mexico State for low-water landscaping and deer-resistant foliage. Because we know that planting lush vegetation is gonna go right in the deer's tummies. And so, we've investigated that. We think it's a great alternative. But we, you know, we don't have a final vision about that. We look forward to teaming with the city and deciding what this 100 feet here and 40 feet here would consist of. But we do know we want gathering areas for families, picnics. The donor even said, you know, somebody gets something at Colfax Ale or 111 Park, they can walk on up to the El Portel or Gate City Park and enjoy it. And also see pickleball courts. We are approaching other private donors. We are putting in for public funds. We hope to approach the county as well. Even though this is in the city, we think that it draws from the county and brings people into the county. We are asking for funds from AARP. They have a community challenge grant that we're hopeful, that's due March 15th. And because we don't yet have our 501(c)(3) designation, although we're, we've submitted it, we're a New Mexico corporation now, we've submitted the 501(c)(3), we may have to enlist the city to help us apply for that AARP grant. They're usually between $10,000 and $35,000. Forty percent of them in the last five years that they've been giving them have been for rural projects. We believe that this project fits any kind of economic development checklist. It's multifunctional, it draws people in on a consistent and regular basis, and it appeals to a wide variety of people and lifestyles, children, families, single folks, retirees, locals, tourists, and those looking to relocate, as you've heard. Also in your packet, and closing this out, we had some dispute last week, although I think it's been kind of brushed over, about the noise level. And the person who had seen it had seen an article, actually that I posted, about the disputes around the country with residential areas and pickleball. And the quote in that, given by the local person, was that it was, sounded like the Three Stooges, which, I won't say which ones are the Three Stooges in here, but you know, we get loud because we're happy and we're having a great time. The decibel level that was indicated on this particular video was 55 decibels. I got a decibel meter two weeks ago and took it out to our play. And with one of the loudest members and the youngest, and the hardest hitting, playing with eight other people, the ambient noise was about 40 decibels. When Mo and Cece were hitting, got up to about 75, 77. When Cece was screaming, it might have been about 80. But we are currently at the high school, we're right between the high school and the behavioral health building, the old SOI building. So I went to the SOI building that same week, we're right on their front porch, basically. I walked in and I said, you know, I'd like to present to the city commission whether we've been bothering you. We've been playing there a year and a half and they looked at me like I was nuts. They said, we can't even hear you. And I stood there and I realized, I can't hear Cece. This is an amazing thing, I'm gonna come here more often. And Cece's mother is the principal at the high school. And I guarantee you, she has called me in for several other things regarding pickleball, but never the noise and never the annoyance. There's windows and classrooms all on the north side there that were, again, just beyond the parking lot. And so, we believe, believe based on the decibel level, that there are a couple people downtown that use that area as their residence, one of whom is here today. But we don't believe that it's going to be a problem for this large area. And finally, there's several letters that didn't get sent via email from people. And there's the last packet, well, two, the last packet is from a group of people from Pueblo who support us 100%. And they show pickleball courts in Rye, Colorado City, Beulah, Trinidad, and of course, Pueblo, which is where many of us, six to 10 of us every other weekend, head up to Pueblo and spend lots of money and spend lots of time playing pickleball. And finally, I just included an article from the Washington Post, just to show that almost every week, once you're tuned in to pickleball and think about it, you'll see an article about it everywhere. AARP, Vanity Fair, this one from the Washington Post was about how a man has taken it upon himself to bring it to the prisons. We have more tease here, another one of our 30-somethings that plays daily, because his shift at the Trinidad prison is the afternoon shift, so he can come play with us in the morning. And he has started a league there with prisoners. And I'm not gonna speak for him, but I'll tell you, he said, it's just amazing. They've picked it up, they love it, they're having fun. And the article that I supplied you indicates that it's truly something that everybody can pick up and enjoy. And as the last thing, I'd just like everybody who's here in favor of the pickleball courts and in favor of the city matching the donor dollar for dollar, to please stand up or raise your hand. That's what I thought it was. So just wanted you to see that and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions or comments? Barry?
Mayor, I would just say to folks present, we did get some opinions expressed on email. I have, myself and Naziri have put those together for the commission. So if you had sent in a comment by email or any written form, the commission has all of those. So we just want y'all to know those were communicated. Thank you, Mayor.
Pickleball advocate, okay. I think when you guys presented before, I think we all appear pretty much were in favor. I think it's a great idea. I had concerns about the location. I thought, you know, we've got what we're trying to do with our aquatic center, kind of sports-related area there. I can see this, I can actually see this now that you've got this. Well, one question I got, I guess JP might be able to answer, on your price for the 363, is that gonna include, because what my concern is with this particular lot is compaction and voids that we know are under there. Is that part of the construction cost? Will they run compaction tests and? The company, the Altitude Athletic, does not include the compaction. That would be on us. Renner, that's out of Denver, the one that did the Pueblo, their dollar amount was 415. It does include the compaction. It also includes an eight-foot fence rather than a six-foot fence. Mid-America, that was out of Kansas, that's doing the Santa Fe job, they're at 445,000. They're, you know, they're quite a bit more. But they were willing to work with us. I don't know that they would work that much with us since they were doing the job in Santa Fe, they wanted to be able to do this one as well. So I can't speak for how much they would come down. But there's also included the compaction. Okay. That's, that would be one of my concerns with that lot, because we know they have the. That's the only thing that they would require us to do on the altitude is the compaction. After that, they put the road base down, there'll be post-tension slab, there'll be two slabs, but both of them will be post-tension. Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Is this a 24 hours, are there lights planned for the courts? Is it only daytime?
What we plan on doing on the courts is piping for lights for future. The cost of lights is phenomenal. So we don't even plan on doing that at this time. But we will run pipe for future lights.
And then the number of restrooms, how many people are playing on the courts and how many restrooms would you need?
Right now, what we have planned is one restroom. Which is more than what Canyon City has.
One more.
Canyon City has six dedicated rooms.
How many got to buy one that's serving as a restroom?
One thing I might point out, you were worried about the compaction because of the voids. I come from lifelong construction experience, commercial buildings, post-tension, you don't need to worry near as much about the compaction or voids underneath. Post-tension is what they build parking garages out of, they've done tons of them. And if it's post-tension, it basically is free supporting. So I mean, there could be a void under it and it's not gonna crack or anything. So I mean, that's one of your stronger, that's why they're doing that, to minimize the cracking. So as long as you even did a halfway job of compaction, the post-tension would be plenty, plenty good.
And getting back to the restrooms, Steph and I just got back from Lake Havasu, planning tournament there. There's 16 courts, we had 130-plus players, two bathrooms. That's it.
Lots of trees.
So it's not really, even the one in Springs didn't even have a restroom, they had porta-potties set out during that tournament.
The porta-potties don't really make that look better.
No, I mean, we would definitely want restrooms, but.
We had some thoughts on some different, just nice parker ideas, and I don't think any one of us is opposed to, I think we're all in favor and want a pickleball court. And my main concern is the restrooms, and that's why I think the aquatic center is the better location for pickleball courts, because restrooms are already there.
Yes.
And there's already lighting.
They're not available, though.
Have to be available.
I think the city would, more than, you know, they work with other people over there, whatever, let somebody have a key that can access those.
Yeah, I think that could be arranged.
We have bids on restrooms.
Right, we've got bids on both vault bathrooms and ones that would fit into the sewer. But I want to stress again, the private money goes away if it's at the aquarium.
But does he, is he aware that there are other plans for a nice park there?
We haven't seen any other plans since this is the first one we've brought.
Well, there's no formal plan like you've done here, which is very nice. But there have been thoughts and ideas that would be simple and look a lot better. One of the thoughts we were, have been tossing around is the aviary and butterfly area like the Brooklyn Botanical Gardens has. It's a simple area, it's easily, easy to maintain and wouldn't require restrooms there. And I think if he knew that there were other ideas and other options.
He knows, his purpose is dual, pickleball courts and fix El Portel. It's not a, it's not to make the largesse of a park there.
We, you know, we hope very strongly to get pickleball courts. And like I said, my only concern is adding in restrooms. It's not just the installation of restrooms, it's the maintenance and care of restrooms.
If I was visiting your butterfly garden and I had my granddaughter with me, where would we go to the restroom? Behind the honeysuckle.
Is it a downtown restaurant?
We spoke with Mr. Berry about the bathrooms, because initially, he had informed us that private bathrooms are the bane, I mean, public bathrooms are the bane of any city's existence. We have a supply, builder, supplier out of Oregon, it can have a lock on it, just as we intend to lock the courts and have a keypad, both for the bathroom and the courts, so that the city hall has that combination, every hotel has that combination, we'll have my text number on that for the combination, we'll have it at the visitor's center, wherever that needs to be for people to access it. The bathrooms are around $15,000, a bathroom. We believe one is sufficient when it's going to be just off and on usage, both for the park and for the pickleball courts. But I just reiterate, the private money is gone if the pickleball courts are gonna be burdened, a burden upon the city only at the aquatic center. That's all I want to make sure that everyone understands.
You know, after seeing your plan there, I'm much more at ease than at first when I heard, we're gonna play pickleball courts in the middle of the lot. My vision with chain link fence, fence around courts, nothing else, and that was not appealing to me. What I've seen here, I can get on board with that. I think, I like the aspect of them being in Raton and available. I think Dr. Naziri made a good point, you know, find out something about a town and it makes you want to come back.
Thank you.
I'm much more open to the idea of Portel lot with this park plan. It isn't an action item tonight, it's strictly presentation and discussion. And it's definitely something that we all need to talk about. And I believe a public meeting would probably be in order to discuss it all, you know, to let everyone see what's actually there, what you're planning, and then get together and see where we want to go.
I think that you've done due diligence.
Absolutely.
I think you guys have done more than everybody thinks it was gonna happen. Personally, I remember when you guys first started and I used to go up there and make fun of you guys. And I said, there's no friggin' pickles. And I said, what's the pickles, you know? But really, I've watched it come into what it is and look at it, noise-wise, I don't see any problem. I can remember when the motorcycles lined the entire downtown area and for three days you could take that. But I don't believe that, I like what you guys have planned here, every single bit of it, I really do. Every single bit of it, I really do, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's very nice, very nice.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the restroom is really the only concern I have.
Anybody else, any other comments?
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Could you please state your name, please, Carson?
I'm Linda Bennett, and I'm a resident of Raton. If I brought my young grandkids here, is there any playground equipment for them? The, what I see as play areas for them are close to streets. And I think that would be a concern. And I'd hate to think of having a fence around the whole thing. But, you know, at the Aquatic Center, there's a lot more space for families, I think, to, to spread out and to do things. And I, I love the idea of pickleball. I think that's great. And I know you're concerned about the money. We all are. But I really think that the Aquatic Center area would be an ideal place for a pickleball center.
Yeah, and that's what we're here for, to hear comments and, and go from there.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I take comment? So, I think one of the reasons that El Portel Lot, not much has happened is the city just recently got that twenty-five thousand to start planning.
Right.
And originally, that money was more money. We were hoping for more so we could really talk about development there. And so the fact that it hasn't been developed doesn't mean that it won't be developed or that that's not something that the city is thinking about. Um, and I, I agree that this has amazing quality of life. You guys have done an amazing job. I love pickleball. I play pickleball. My family plays pickleball. Love it. I think it's a wonderful sport. And I do think there are actually some kids I know in high school in other states that, that play pickleball. Um, it, it's trending, it's growing, it's wonderful, and it's a lifelong sport, which I really like about it. Um, I'm still up in the air about where I feel about the location. I, um, irregardless of the money, I feel like, uh, the city is also, in the next few years, really trying to develop Roundhouse Park. And this would be, uh, an anchor over there of, of recreation. Um, and that we could develop around it. I, I feel like it, it, there are good things, there's positives, there's negatives. I have concerns about public restrooms, you know? So-and-so has the code, so-and-so has this. We know how that works at the convention center. It doesn't work. Locking the pickleball courts, I'm not sure how I feel about that. If the city's helping put money into pickleball courts and then, you know, they're here in this park, but you can't play unless you have the code and it's locked. And you can't always call, you know, something can happen to Leslie Fernandez. People aren't always available. It's always going to fall back on the city to clean and to maintain and to do all that. Like the nuts and bolts and logistics of locks and maintenance on that can, can be concerning. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying I'm against it. Like I said, you guys have done a fabulous job. And there is no doubt that this is a growing thing and that it's important that I want pickleball courts in Raton. Um, but I agree that, I mean, I, as, as we look at developing Roundhouse, there are some really great ideas over there, too, about outdoor amphitheaters and a pump track and kind of having all those things there, which... Where, I've been on the commission five years and that's still out there and planning. And I hope in the next five years to actually see movement on those things as we focus better on outdoor recreation. Um, those are just my thoughts. I'm, I'm not against this necessarily. I'm just saying as, for the long-term planning of the city, what is the best thing? And so I have to think of everybody as a whole. You know, you guys obviously have a really fabulous pickleball group, and this is the best for you. But I'm thinking the whole city. Um, and is that? And I'm just asking that question. I'm not saying it's not, I'm not saying it is. Uh, and as I think about those public restrooms, I think about a lot of the problems in other cities in our area with, um, I don't want to create an encampment problem, um, in that area. That does concern me greatly, especially, uh, in the middle of a city right there.
Right.
And in the past, we did have a, it didn't fill through, but we were looking at that lot as a development. That's one reason why it was slower because there are people who might come in and put in apartments. There have been some other things that would be direct gross receipts revenue and not necessarily indirect economic benefit. I think this is a huge quality of life thing. And I do like the idea of tying all those things together from First Street to Roundhouse to Third Street, whatever it might be. And those are my comments. I know we're not here to make a decision. Just kind of thinking about it, so.
As a question about the Aquatic Center area, there are only certain spots that will accommodate those courts because of the disc golf, the horseshoes, the bochi, the volleyball. All that are not being used except for the disc golf. So there's only certain spots that that's going to go on at the Aquatic Center. If by chance your bond goes through and you're to build schools over there or a big school.
We don't have...
Out of the possibility.
Schools are not, would not go there.
No.
That's not, no, there's no, there's no plan for the schools there.
There's no?
Not in that location, no.
Plan for the school is to be up behind the high school, as it is now.
Right.
Okay. I thought somebody at the Aquatic Center was all...
No, and I think we want, like, my goal for the city is to have an outdoor recreation master plan where we've actually thought all of these things out and we have a plan before we start building this here and there, whatever. And, and I think pickleball is here to stay, but what if it's like, you know, tennis, it's taken a while, but what if in twenty years it's not as popular, you know? That people don't like it? Can we repurpose that area? And over at Roundhouse, I think like the volleyball court is kind of a bust. It, it, the goat heads have taken over. It's just a mess. Disc golf can be moved around, around other things. And, and baskets move around some of them anyway to make it more challenging and interesting and whatnot. So, I mean, I don't think that area is set in stone. Uh, the dog park was, was put there, but, you know, with a fence that could be moved if we needed to. And that's not very successful either because of goat heads again. So to me, that whole area needs some work. And it needs some money put into it because that could be, that could be such a cool central park in Raton. It could be landscaped, it could be green, we could redesign it. Like, I'm thinking big when I think of Roundhouse being developed, not just like tartan up what's there. No, we, we got to think big.
But if that's the, your idea, then who's going to take care of it? The city?
The city, absolutely. The city's going to have to do it.
And why can't they take care of that?
I agree. The city is going to have to take care of more. And as we have more gross receipts, we can hire more staff to do more mowing and more maintenance and more bathroom cleaning. And all of those things kind of come one on and the other. Yeah. Absolutely.
Okay, well, I think it's been a good conversation. And I think, in my opinion, I believe the commission is all in favor of pickleball.
Right.
And I, like I said, uh, I commend you guys tremendous, tremendous plan here.
Thank you.
Tremendous plan. Uh, it's changed my thinking of what was going to be there. Um, I, 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 I still think we need to, to involve the public and then we can go from there.
We would be glad if the city came up with four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and looked at the Aquatic Center. But I don't, I don't know that that's going to happen. And I, if, if the city doesn't want private funds involved, then that's what you're looking, looking at.
Sure.
Uh, I appreciate your time.
I appreciate you guys for your presentation.
All right. You guys can't leave. You got to stay for the whole meeting. You can.
Okay, I'm D. Presentation on Exploratone, my yearly report and updates by Patricia Durant. Let's see if we can get it all pulled down here. You did right. All right, Patricia, there we go.
Hello, hi, good evening. I'm just coming to give a bi-yearly, yearly report on our Exploratone analytics and what I've been doing for the last six months.
Hey, guys, guys? Can you guys keep down a little bit, please?
We can't close the doors.
Can't close the doors. Can't close the doors.
Do not close the doors.
Kevin, we can't close the doors.
Okay. Sorry, there's a car issue.
No, it's an open meeting, not issue.
Ask Leslie if she brought her discipline here.
All right, go ahead, Patricia.
All right, yeah, so I just wanted to give an update on what I've been doing for the past six months with Exploratone. Um, so we'll start with analytics from August twenty-twenty-two to February twenty-twenty-three. Um, for Google Ads, we have a Google Ads grant that spends about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year that is given to us for free by Google because we applied for it. So in the last two quarters, we had two hundred and fifty thousand people see, um, our ads and click on our Exploratone website. Um, right now, for analytics-wise, I should have put this in there, but I didn't. Um, for those that are clicking on our ads on Google, about sixty percent are clicking on it for relocation. And most of those are targeted to retirees. Um, and then when I first came on in about twenty-twenty, um, the majority of those that were clicking, it was about seventy-eight percent of retirees. And that's kind of gone down because obviously housing has been, you know, has been an issue. Uh, but also, we kind of retargeted our ads to reach a younger demographic, mostly for coming to Raton for events and outdoor recreation. So right now, we're targeting, um, a demographic from the ages of twenty-eight to about forty-two that have small families, that are looking for affordable places to come and take their kids. And so that's where our ads are going. So about forty percent of that's going towards that. Um, for social media, so, um, I've created three social media accounts since I've come on. And in the last six months, we've had two hundred and seventy-two thousand people that have been reached through social media. And that is all organic, meaning I did not pay for that. It all happened naturally. Um, just kind of giving an example. So TikTok, I started a TikTok this summer, and that has reached sixty-five thousand people. And that is mostly a demographic of those that are in high school and between the ages of twenty and thirty-five.
So it's not Commissioner Chavez's dancing?
No. No. So it, it's really, really exciting because we haven't had that. Um, I've worked with a lot of interns over the last year and a half, um, that are in high school. And they're like, "I've never heard of Capulin. I've never heard of Sugar Reed." And I'm like, "Well, now you know." So you go, we got a TikTok going and we constantly share things. You know, what's going on in the town, events. If there's something going at the, going on at the Schuler, we'll take a video and get lots of likes on it. So in total, for the last six months, we've reached about five hundred and twenty-two thousand people, which is actually great. So I am anticipating that by the end of the year, we will reach one point five million people. Um, when I first came on in twenty-twenty, we were reaching about three hundred and eighty thousand with, um, Google Ads and social media combined. So I've grown that quite a bit since I've come on. Do you guys have any questions about that? Awesome, thank you. Okay. Um, so I did give, um, two quarterly reports to Michael Ann as far as what the commission and lodger's tax is paying for, for, everything's paying for my salary. Every month, one, one thousand six hundred and sixty-six goes to pay my salary and, and that gross-wise. And then, um, also, I just kind of put a summary here of what I've been doing so you don't have to read through those two quarterly reports. Um, so pretty much every business day, I schedule and I post on social media, on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, haven't, and TikTok. Haven't done too much on YouTube. Um, also sharing on social media stories and, you know, we will create videos, like reels or TikToks, you know, when we can on content from the area. So if I happen to pop over to Sugar Reed, I'll take a, a video. And we get lots of good content from the video and lots of drive on our social media. Um, one thing I have been working on is I have been working on a complete redesign of the Exploratone website. Um, so you can see that I've attached some snapshots, if you can see them. I know they might be a little bit small, but you can visit the website to view. Um, we've definitely changed up some of the design, um, added a lot more pictures, a lot more basic things on things to do, like going, going to the museum, going to Sugar Reed, going to Capulin, um, those sorts of things, just kind of highlighting our big assets of the area. And then what I plan to do is, while I'm doing the visitor's guide now, is to create specific pages on the website and not just, you know, simple pop-ups that say, "Hey, let's go to the Raton Museum, this is where it's at, these are the hours." I'm going to have a full page dedicated to as much information as we can so that we can start tailoring our Google Ads to, to those landing pages. So it's a lot more detailed, not just a quick picture. So it's, it's, it'll be nice. And then right now, I am working on, uh, the visitor's guide. I've actually started selling ads for that. Um, just so that you know, prices for shipping as well as, um, printing and paper costs has definitely gone up. So, um, kind of, I'm actually hitting, I'm, I'm breaking even at this point with the ads that I've sold. Um, so we'll, we'll be able to purchase between ten and fifteen thousand copies of that and also post it online. Um, so that'll, we plan to actually put that out, um, get the guide in hand by beginning, middle of May. So just keep an eye out for that. We'll make sure and distribute that as well. And then, um, couple of the big projects that I've been working on with our Google Ads grant is, our Google Ads grant, they constantly make changes to their algorithm, and that's typically around October, September. And they made quite a bit of changes. And so we've lost about two thousand in traffic on our Google Ads. But I've been working slowly, kind of tweaking, getting retrained on a lot of things. And so now we're kind of bumping up our traffic from our Google Ads back to the website. So just slowly doing that, but I'll make sure to keep, um, you know, that's my main part of my job. So making sure that we're keeping our traffic up. Um, but also, we have, what I've done is I've worked with New Legend, or with the lodger's tax. And every time that they purchase a specific ad buy, they ask me to design it, make sure it's cohesive with the Exploratone brand. So one of the last things, last two things I did was a New Legends quarterly magazine ad that focuses on the events for that quarter and then things that they can find in Raton to do during that quarter. So like specifically for winter time, um, they could go to the Aquatic Center, they could go to the museum. They can't, they can definitely go to Sugar Reed, but there's, you know, only so much you could do. Um, so just making sure that, um, getting those out in time. And then last but not least, um, one of the big things that has happened, um, if you ever noticed, if you type exploratone.com, you go to the website and it says exploratone.com, or exploratone.sustainraton.org. That is because the center has never officially owned the domain, but the city has paid for it. Um, so what's really great about this is Rich Krenz retired. And so we were able to secure the domain with the help of Michael Ann and Scott so that it's under the center. And so that probably by the summer, I'm actually working with Google to figure out how to get the website switched over so that when you do type in exploratone.com, it stays that way and it's not the subdomain. Um, sometimes it gets a little bit confusing. But, um, we anticipate that will bring actually a lot more traffic to the website as a result. So I'm excited about that. And then just the bottom of this, I've attached snapshots of what's happening online for this on the right-hand, left, left, right-hand side. You'll see that this is just kind of a snapshot of a video. You can't see the video, but, um, for this specific video, I went out to, um, the Christmas Carol and it was snowing, it was beautiful, took a, you know, five-second video, got two hundred and fifty-four likes, twelve comments, um, lots of good engagement on that. And then you can also see on the, oh, sorry, that was the right-hand side. And then on the left-hand side, you'll see just kind of a snapshot of the amount of views that each video is kind of, um, gauging. Um, right now, the biggest one is when we decorated for, um, when the city decorated for Christmas and there was snow and there was about five thousand views on that little video right there. So just a snapshot of what the engagement looks like. And then also, one of the big things that I've been doing is making sure that Twitter, the Twitter headers, the Facebook headers, as well as our website headers, all have kind of the same picture or theme. So specifically to, um, right now, that's on the front page is, um, during the summer, we had an intern write a history about the Santa Fe Trail. And then there was a part two to the Raton Pass. So on the front page of Exploratone, there is, you know, the cowboy and the horse statue out at the NRA. And then you just click "Learn More," and it tells you pretty much the history of why Raton's here. So just making sure that those are changed, you know, at least every couple of months or quarterly to, um, you know, coincide with the seasons or if there's any major events going on, like Run Raton, um, Christmas Carol, things like that. Um, that is all that I have. Do you have any questions?
Good job.
Huge props on securing the domain name and getting, and that, when that gets, like, all the redirects and stuff fixed, that is...
Yes.
Everything really looks fabulous.
Thank you.
I mean, we're incredibly, um, blessed to have you with all your talents because the, the things that you're putting out there make us look so good.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
Very good, Patricia, very good.
I appreciate it. No, but yeah, just, I'm, I'm excited for that. So I plan to get that dot com, you know, with the Google Ads grant and everything switched over by the summer. It's going to take a lot of work, but it'll be fun. So, yeah.
No, I appreciate the updates here. I remember doing that.
Thank you. All right.
Anything else?
Thank you, okay.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hi, yeah. Sure, we can take three-minute break? All right. We're, we're in a recess. Got you, sir.
I really wanted to get some information on that. I knew that, I knew that Commissioner Chavez was hoping for that, so. Don't he? The concern about restaurants, I thought that, is, you know, a bunch of senior citizens.
Right.
Why do you need shit the door? You can have at least ten stores, five for one, five for one.
You have the right idea.
Yeah.
So that's a lot of money. And I can understand the neighborhood, because it's just a week, you can hear twenty-four hours. That's gonna be just insane. You don't want, people will be in the walls.
Right.
So that's the only reason I brought that up. All right, I appreciate it. Thanks, Tony.
Mr. Berry. Why did the civilian here not stand up and debunk their post-its in concrete?
I figured that wasn't the place to do that.
If anybody needs to use the women's bathroom, we have it. So we have an issue.
Oh, you directed it?
Yeah. Yeah, the dispatchers were mopping it up. I don't know if they called Leonard, but we have a backup. Hopefully the men's side, I don't know.
That's my, and they come up to my phone here. There's no ten-foot space. There can't be any foot there.
It's a good idea. When I was young, we called it paddleball. Now it's pickleball. It's paddleball. It's paddleball. We had outdoor courts in New England, they were made of New England, they were made of aluminum, and they had a sandpaper surface to them, and they were heated, so you could play year-round. It was loud, because that ball hit that metal deck, and it was a lot of fun. Now, what you need is some, you need some power stations for food trucks. Well, yes, they don't have to run generators.
Give me a little boost there.
That would be really cool around us. We used to have, Florida does county parks really well. They're extremely grossed over multi-use, just like that, it's usually the dollars to do. They had lots of work, they had food trucks making each one. So, no, you'd have to get food trucks for some line, line tubes. Sorry, the women's here was out of order, so I had to, or do some, upgrade.
He's been mad about it ever since, you know.
She went to Bappy, but that one's out of order, so we had to reroute.
I just saw her standing out there, I thought she was.
When did you get sick?
Last week.
Oh, man.
It's Saturday night when we got back from Nippon Lee.
Yeah, yeah, that's when you got sick?
Yeah.
All that, all those people, all those germs.
Yeah. And I spent the last month in the capital, almost, I think.
Oh, my gosh, so yeah.
Did you have something for me, Scott? Did you have something for me, you said?
No.
Could you cut to me when I don't want to?
None at all.
You're on E, we're not even third way through.
It'll go fast, right? Well, there's, there's no one left to argue, not to.
I have to raise my hand.
Yeah? Feel free. So you guys were able to get that domain name from Rich Coons?
I'm sorry?
That domain name, Exploratone, you guys were able to buy that from Rich? That was a huge win.
Yeah.
That exploratone.com?
Right.
That was really important.
Yeah.
Had to buy it from him?
I don't know the details, but I'm curious to find out.
It's been an effort over some time, yeah.
Film production facility and renovations, lease payments, and tenant improvements to the city's Kearney School Facility for a local economic development project. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, under the provisions of the Local Economic Development Act statute of the state of New Mexico, as well as the LEDA ordinance of the city of Ratone, we had requested proposals through the RFP some time back for occupation and commercial development of the Kearney School project. We did receive one proposal on that, that was from El Ratone Media Works. El Ratone Media Works is a not-for-profit corporation that proposed film development and workforce training in the building. As we've talked about before, we have over four million dollars from two sources to put towards renovation of the building, to support this process, and this would be the next step in a multi-step process. And so in order to put in place a LEDA agreement, typically referred to as a project participation agreement, we would do that by ordinance. And you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we had a similar issue with Ramel Family Farms and the use of the Armex Building and a proposed greenhouse. That's very similar to what is proposed with Kearney School, where we would look at renovation of the building. That's using capital outlay funds appropriated for the building, for the project from the New Mexico Legislature in the 2022 regular session, as well as funds that were appropriated to the city of Ratone from the twenty-two federal omnibus bill through congressional-directed spending appropriation. And so we are set to go forward with some of that. We don't have the grant agreement yet, either the grant agreements on the funding that we talked about. And the requirement of the New Mexico Department of Finance Administration is that we have the ordinance, we have the project participation agreement. A third element of this would be the lease agreement. This is an introduction of an ordinance. We would then schedule a public hearing related to the ordinance. Because of the publication requirements, we would anticipate that that public hearing would be held on March twenty-eighth, at which time we'll consider the project participation agreement, which will be included as Exhibit A to Ordinance Number Ten Twenty-One, as well as the lease agreement, which will be included as Exhibit B of the Ordinance Ten Twenty-One. And we'll consider adoption of the ordinance at that March twenty-eighth meeting, as well as the two agreements. Hold up there and answer any questions the commission might have.
All righty, this is an introduction of an ordinance. No action will be taken, but Mr. Berry can feel questions at this time.
Sounds good. I look forward to seeing the project move forward, and I will make a motion to introduce Ordinance Number Ten Twenty-One, the project participation agreement between the city Ratone and El Ratone Media Works.
A second.
A motion a second to introduce the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Do we need a roll call for that? Not for the introduction?
I would think for the introduction, no.
Okay.
For the ordinance itself, yes.
Okay.
Item F, deliberate act on hangar lease agreement between the city of Ratone and Martin Mangelsdorf. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, a little background on the proposed agreement that you have in your packet. This is in regard to an existing hangar structure that is located at Ratone Municipal Airport. We have a number of hangars that are constructed under a similar agreement, and the agreement basically covers this arrangement. The city owns the property that the hangar is located on, and that a private individual has paid for the construction of the hangar for aviation purposes, storing aircraft in that. This particular hangar was originally constructed and has been under a lease agreement by Carol Morrison. I understand that the hangar was constructed in 2002, and the general hangar lease agreement is for a term of fifty years. During that term, the aircraft owner owns the hangar, that's his property, and he can use it for uses that are approved by FAA and state aviation, generally aviation purposes. But the city owns the property underneath it, and that's what is covered under the lease agreement. The hangar owner does pay a nominal lease fee annually to the city of Ratone during the fifty-year term. You see an extending rate of fees for that, but it's a very nominal fee. So it's, this, this grant agreement, this lease agreement, from years one through ten, would amount to four cents per square foot lease rate. And then years forty-one through fifty, it would go up to twenty-five cents per square foot. So that's a very affordable rate, and it is to encourage the location of aircraft at Ratone Municipal Airport and the construction of hangars. What's going on in this case is the hangar is being sold to Martin Mangelsdorf. That's a situation that has happened before at the airport, and we simply would execute a new lease agreement with Martin Mangelsdorf for a new fifty-year term. So that's the agreement that's in front of you. The elements of the agreement, I've basically summarized for you. You have to use the hangar for aviation purposes, and we have a very nominal, but ascending lease rate that's due annually. Hold up there, Mayor, and answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Berry?
I will move to approve the hangar lease agreement between the city of Ratone and Martin Mangelsdorf.
Okay. A motion a second to approve the hangar lease agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate act on professional services contracts from the city of Ratone and Lloyd and Associates for depot renovation project. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, this commenced through a request for proposal for professional services for the renovation of the Ratone Train Depot. We do have funding in place that is approximately three-hundred thousand dollars, primarily funded through capital outlay awarded to Ratone from New Mexico Main Street. There are also matching, local matching funds in that. The intent of the city of Ratone is to restore the depot to a near original condition. And so that's the project that we've talked about for some time. The committee assigned to grade proposals on this did select Wayne Lloyd and Associates for the renovation project for professional services. And what we have in the packet for you tonight is not a professional services contract, but I would consider it a, for phase one of the project. It describes a scope of work and a fee, and we will have to bring you an agreement. And how the agreement is gonna look is it's basically a master services agreement for the various phases of the project. And then, like I say, you can consider this a service order, a task order for that phase one. What you see in there is a fee of about sixty-six thousand dollars and some change for initial services. And under the professional services, Wayne Lloyd and Associates would provide an architect, electrical engineer, mechanical engineer, a cultural resources expert, and also environmental consultant, and a left-out structural engineer for the project. So in the first phase, we'll really get a good handle on what it would take to renovate the building. Right now, they've done a preliminary walkthrough of the building, but we really don't have all of the information that is necessary. So that will take place in the first phase. In the second phase, that would be final design, and of course, it's a historic building, one of the most iconic buildings in our downtown area. So that will take a lot of work through the Historic Preservation Division Director, or the shipo of state of New Mexico, and they'll have a lot of input in how the building is renovated. We want to preserve the historic character of the building. So I plan to bring you the master services agreement at the next meeting. We still are working on that. I would recommend to the commission that they approve the service order that you have in your packet, and that will help the process get rolling. Of course, with all capital outlay, once we sign that agreement, we're on the clock. And so the clock is running on this. New Mexico Main Street is looking at the city of Ratone to make timely progress on it, and we want the project to move forward in 2023. So that's my recommendation, is approval of the service order that you have in your packet.
Any questions, comments?
I'm going to motion to approve the, I'm gonna call it the preliminary free fee proposal, since that's what it's entitled, between the city of Ratone and Lloyd and Associates for the depot renovation.
Second. Motion a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, deliberate act on resolution twenty-two-three-zero-six, application for fiscal year twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four, LGRF Cooperative Co-op Funding to NMDOT District Four. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, LGRF means the local government road fund of the New Mexico Department of Transportation. At this time, every year, they invite us to submit an application for funding. Generally, we are successful in getting co-op funding annually. Our latest project was the resurfacing of West Colfax Avenue, so we're, we don't have any outstanding grant agreement currently. We're closed out on that project. This is typically lower amounts of money. Typically, we see funding coming from DOT through the co-op program in the amounts of fifty, sixty, or seventy thousand dollars. The program provides seventy-five percent of the funding and requires a twenty-five percent match from local government. What I've put in your packet would be generally, well, the amount would be a hundred thousand dollar request. Generally, this is to add pavement markings in the, in the commercial downtown area, generally between First Street and Third Street, and from Savage Avenue to Rio Grande Avenue. We would strike parking lanes on streets that we have resurfaced in the past few years, where we don't have designated parking lanes, angle parking. Also, on Second Street, the parallel parking area, we would look at adding crosswalks, stop bars, turn arrows, anything that's pavement marking. I have added another element in this, and that would be radar speed signs. There are a number of them included in my estimate, that we have put at various locations throughout town. I think the biggest need would be on Sugar Reed Avenue, and that's one thing we identified in our public hearing, that I think would help the concerns with speeding there, is a number of speed radar signs. If we're not funded for speed radar signs under this, I think that we're, we need to fund that either out of our street fund or through general funds, but that would be an important element, not limited to Sugar Reed. There's some other areas that we're looking at as well. There's some other areas that we're looking at as well.
All right.
Well, under the resolution, what you would connect to, though, is a match of $25,000 of local funds on a $100,000 project.
All right. Any questions?
Would that be gas tax for the match?
That would be the gas tax, yes.
I'll move to approve resolution number 2023-7.
Six.
No, sorry, six. Application for fiscal year 2023-24, LGRF, to the NMDOT District 4. Second.
Motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate and act on resolution 2023-07, application for fiscal year 2023-2024, municipal arterial program MAP funding to NMDOT District 4. Mr. Burr.
Mayor Commission, also under Local Government Road Fund is the municipal arterial program. The co-op program is lesser dollars, but you can generally apply it to any local street or transportation project. The municipal arterial program is generally higher awards. The chance of success is about 50/50 is what we've experienced. And this grant is specific to, let me find the wording here, streets, local streets that are principal extensions of rural state highways or of other streets, not on the state highway system, but that qualify under designated criteria, generally as an arterial. We can talk about any project that you want to talk about here. I do bring you a recommendation under this resolution, 2023-07. That would be renovation of the North Underpass, right across from City Hall. We have a chronic problem when we get a big rainstorm, and that drainage is very slow there. We, under this project, we would include an engineering investigation as to why it's slow and try to correct that problem. I think that there was some kind of failure of the drainage pipe between Rattown Creek and the underpass, so we would plan to investigate that and come up with a solution to correct that. I'd also hope to recoat the concrete abutments, the steel beams, and then generally improve lighting, pavement, which can be rough, pavement markings, hopefully security cameras, that kind of thing. So that's my recommendation to you. I've provided you an estimate of $400,000. Like the co-op, you would be agreeing to 25% match on $400,000. The local funds would be $100,000, again, through the street fund, and we would ask the DOT to provide us $300,000 or 75% of the funding. In the past, we've used MAP funds to repay Hospital Drive. We've used it on Tiger Drive. We've also used it on South Fifth Street as just an example of where successful MAP funds were applied.
All right. Any questions, comments, any suggestions for another project?
I'd like this project, yeah.
Yeah, I like this one.
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution 2023-07.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-07. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate and act on an agreement between the city of Rattown and the state of New Mexico, CYFD, juvenile justice grant number 21-290-3200-20841, amendment number five. Michael Ann.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. You will recall a couple months ago, we did submit an application to CYFD. They refer to it as their short-cycle funding application, and so we were successful and have been awarded $31,268. This spending was specific for the restorative justice programs. We currently have programs at the high school that are funded through this grant, and then they also have programs at the intermediate school that are funded through another grant that the Rattown Public Schools have. We also did a budget adjustment a couple months ago because of the high number of referrals in the restorative programs. So with this increased funding, this will be adequate funding to get us through the end of the fiscal year through June 30. So we're very thankful to CYFD for this funding. It does also, in your packet, is the actual amendment number five that you'll be approving, and you'll see that they've included a new budget for the increased funding. And so that would bring our total grant award for fiscal year. I mean, this grant does go through fiscal year '24, so it is a little confusing, but it says the grant award for the period FY '24 shall not exceed $219,696. So with that, it also does amend our juvenile justice coordinator's pay. She was eligible based on her years of experience with the program to increase to $27 per hour that is totally reimbursed by the grant. It also does increase the 15% admin fee that the city receives for being the fiscal agent for this grant as well. And then also, the 40% in-kind requirement does go up slightly. We do try to do this as a non-cash in-kind match, and we'll adjust the figures accordingly for that requirement as well. Is there any questions? I think in addition, probably at the next meeting, I would need to bring to you a revision to our subcontract agreement with CCI to reflect the increased award of funding for this program.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll move to approve the agreement between the city of Rattown and the state of New Mexico, CYFD, juvenile justice grant.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate and act on resolution 2023-08, fiscal year 23, January financial report. Michael Ann.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet this evening, we bring to you the January, or at least the reports reconciled through January 31 of 2023. You'll see that I've provided you with the comparison reports that we do every month for the lodgers' taxes, the first one in your packet. Lodger's tax is still fairly strong, but you'll see compared to last year, which was our highest year, we're still down a little over 5%. But I think, you know, this is the slower time of year, and probably come the fourth quarter, I think we'll end the fiscal year pretty strong in lodger's tax again this year. Gas tax is also included in your packet. Our distribution this month was $18,103. It is down about 20% compared to last year. So we are kind of monitoring that fund, because as you know, we leverage those funds for the co-op and the MAP and several other transportation road fund projects that we have. So, you know, we'll make sure that we did hit that fund pretty hard, just with the CDBG project and some others that we just finished up, but it'll start to replenish, and those funds will continue to accrue so that they're available for the street projects that we do have coming up. Also, our cannabis excise tax, that distribution has maintained, you know, a little over $3,000 a month, and so we collected $3,234 for the month of February. And then I've also included in your packet our grocery receipts comparison reports. So with the February distribution, we're still right at about 20% above our budget projection. You'll see in my general fund summary, the general fund ending cash balance less our 1/12 reserve is $3,788,677.06. We did just today do a transfer because the greenhouse project is complete. We did a sizable transfer, I think it was $323,000, and that was a temporary transfer that we did just to fund the project until it was complete. So we've received the final reimbursement on that, and those funds have been transferred back into the general fund. So that'll definitely, you'll see on next month's report, an even more improved cash position there. I think the only other temporary transfer that we have yet to reimburse back to the general fund would be for the hangar project, which is still ongoing, but hopefully before the end of the fiscal year, we can transfer those funds back as well. I did note in the report that we did receive the small cities assistance distribution, which was a lot earlier than expected. Generally, we don't get it until after the close of the legislative session. We did budget $250,000. It's always kind of a wild card. We don't know what the amount's going to be, but I'm pleased to report that we received So that's a little over $86,000 more than what we budgeted. So that's always nice when it comes in higher, and we're not having to deal with trying to fill a budget deficit. So other than that, you know, we have worked diligently to close out quite a few grant projects, and so I'm sure the city manager will be giving a report on the hangar and some of those other projects. But as we close them out, I mean, we have several projects out to bid right now and a couple RFPs, so still actively working on additional grants as we close them out. But I'm always pleased when we can close most of them out before the end of the fiscal year. So we're working on the senior center project right now. I hope to have that one closed out by the end of the fiscal year if all goes well. I think we're still dealing with a lot of some supply chain issues and delays, especially with electrical, so we'll see how that project progresses. Other than that, the winter is a little bit slower time of the year. I don't really have anything specific in the financial report that I was going to note, but if you have any questions, I would stand to answer any questions.
Any questions for Michael Ann?
I make the motion to approve resolution 2023-08, FY '23, January financial report.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-08. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now deliberate and act on resolution 2023-09, budget adjustment number 10, fiscal year 23. Michael Ann.
Mayor and Commission, right before the meeting, I did provide you with amended budget adjustment. Kind of at the last minute, we, excuse me, added to it for some training that the fire department will be doing with the UNM EMS Academy. We're just moving some funds from one line item to the other so that they can start that training. You'll see that I've included a budget adjustment for the increase in the small cities assistance. And also, we are still seeing increases in utilities for the aquatic center and chemicals. And so I do have a few line items that I'm just kind of shuffling funds around, but we will have to use some reserve funds that we have to put towards the utilities, and that's mainly natural gas. Lodger's tax in the promotional fund, we're just doing some budget adjustments to cover. I just kind of had estimated earlier in the year the salaries and the taxes for the employees that we have at the tourist information center, so I'm just needing to increase that slightly, probably to get us through the end of the fiscal year for those staffing. Let's see, lodger's tax, non-promotional. We are purchasing a total of 50 tables for the convention center. We have some money available in the capital outlay convention center line item that I'm just going to move into the maintenance and repair line item. The purchase of tables really isn't considered a capital asset. Also, we did get approved for the LEPF retention funds, and so this was something that was passed in the previous legislative session to allow for our LEPF distribution. A portion of those funds could be used for retention payments for law enforcement officers with 20-plus years of service. We do have two officers that are eligible and have been approved, and so you'll recall when we talked about this in the budget, we can use 15 or $7,500 of LEPF, and then the city matches another 50%. So for the two officers, we did budget this year the $15,000 to come out of the general fund towards our match, and then I increased it a little bit because the funds, their funds won't cover the taxes, so we'll also be covering that portion. And then the final budget adjustment is for the juvenile justice grant for the amount of the $31,268 that was approved this evening. Is there any questions?
On the, I don't know if this is important, on the cover sheet it just says 2023-09. I don't know if it means the 09 to match everything else at the top. I don't know if that's a good deal, but I thought everything looked really well put together. You're going to pick the other one, Michael Ann.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I'll make the motion to adopt resolution 2023-09, budget adjustment number 10, fiscal year 23.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-09. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Tell the commission that the New Mexico Outdoor Recreation Division has an initiative going on called New Mexico Uplift that have retained a consultant that is really working on statewide strategy, and that consultant will be in Rattown on March 15 at 5:30. They will be at the Moss Outdoor Recreation Building, as I understand. So we would ask the public to come and make their comments on what's current and what we're looking at as far as outdoor recreation in Rattown and Colfax County and the general area. Of course, part of that strategy is partnering with people in Southern Colorado and trying to tie together with what Colorado is doing, and so they'll be coming to ask what our thoughts are, and what will be reflected in the statewide plan. March 15, 5:30 p.m. As Michael Ann had mentioned, we did receive the certificate of occupancy on our greenhouse project. The project is complete, and Ramel Family Farms is in operation on the greenhouse. They have, planting has happened, and they're growing in the building right now. Also, as far as the rest of the Armex facility, that will be in full operation by Ramel Family Farms from this point going forward. Also, as Michael Ann had stated, I'll give you an update on the construction of the new airport hangar. Structurally, the hangar is complete. Electricians have been working out there. The installation of electrical systems is essentially complete, with the exception of the electrical panel. Some of these electrical components have really been difficult to get over the last couple of years, and this is no exception. But what we will try to get done within the next four to six weeks is the electrical service that we talked about at the last meeting provided by Springer Co-op, and then complete the airport hangar. We do have a lighting improvement project underway. The intent of this project is to replace fluorescent fixtures or incandescent fixtures with new LED lighting. The contractor has been working at the aquatic center. The contractor has been working at the aquatic center, and we're about two-thirds of the way done with the lighting replacement at the aquatic center. Next, we'll go to the library, and the plan is to replace all of the lighting at the library. Energy efficiency is a, is a, is a goal of this project, and just to improve the, the lighting. At the SunWest Building, sometimes called the Highland Building, sometimes called the center, we have had a, a problem here recently this last week with the HVAC system. We've had a contractor look at that. I understand we have five different units in the building. Two of those have failed, and we're going to be looking at replacement of those units. And we'll try to move that project as long as quickly as possible, bring it to the commission. We will see significant cost with replacing those units. We are limping along on the remaining three units, but it's probably not a bad idea to look at replacing those as well. It's probably a phased project, so that's something I'll put out there for you, and we will be talking about more as we go along. Commissioners, you had all had talked about the legislative session, and you've covered that pretty well. I will just add that the session will run through March 18, and it'll adjourn on March 18. Generally, we're past the halfway point. The halfway point is where that's the deadline for introducing legislation. So the legislation generally is all out there, and we'll follow that. We had a report on that the last time, and y'all talked about some of the bills that we're looking at. The other thing that we ought to hear about in the next 10 days to 14 days is Capital Outlay. And so we had, we've talked extensively about requests that the city of Rattone has, has put forward as our priorities, and we'll keep an eye on that, and I'll report back to you on what we're seeing in, in that bill. I think one last bit of news here. Earlier, we had submitted a, an application for funding to a program under the U.S. Department of Transportation. This is called Reconnecting Communities. The Rattone application was to look at really planning and design of replacement of the bridge that's located between the Frontage Road and East 10th Street. That's between the Clayton Highway and Highway 72, as well as street improvements there. As you recall, in talking about that, the bridge approaches are not safe. Did get notice today that we were not funded for that program. So we'll find other ways to, to look at, at that bridge and East 10th and try to address the, the needs that we have there. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the commission? Commissioner Chatterley?
First, everybody, go by the aquatic center. The new mural in the party room is underway, and it's awesome. It's so cute. And second, I just want to appreciate all you guys for your civility, professionalism, and I think we make a good team. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Jacomo.
Thank you.
Mr. Chow.
Bye.
I'll just go let yours in. Appreciate you all.
All right, dinner. I appreciate you all, and good night. We are adjourned.